The chair is out with something else here somewhere there. I'm filling in for him tonight. Thank you for coming to our meeting. My call is beginning to order and we're going to stand to the pleasure of the Legion.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would be kind enough to have a moment of silence. Thank you. Mr. Gentry, I know there are several items here on the agenda that we're going to try to read or range to amend. Will you go over those please, sir?
Yes, as part of our standard procedure, when all five members are not available to vote on certain issues, those issues are postponed if that is part of the change in tonight's agenda. Also, we have a couple of additions. The first four items will remain the same. The new fifth item will be amended to the end of the from the Health Department. I will be item six and Tammy and I together will fill you in on the information from the architects. Item six is postponed till a future meeting. Item seven remains the same. Item eight remains the same, but I will be presenting that Carrie is at home this evening with her husband who's recovering from surgery. Number nine remains the same. Ten is an addition, which is Chris Maney, and he will be reviewing the mowing bids for our change in the way that we're proposing to take care of our parks and some of our athletic facilities. Number ten is being postponed next meeting. My presentation will remain the same, followed by a adjournment. Chairman, those are the corrections, additions, pleasantries to the agenda. I move that we approve the amended agenda.
Do I have a second? Second, all in favor? It's approved. Good. Thank you, gentlemen. Our next item is approval of February ninth to 2021 regular minutes and February 23rd special minutes. I know you've got a chance to read those over, gentlemen. You have any correction, changes, edits, or they're going to have a motion to approve.
Well, I wasn't available on February ninth due to illness, but I reviewed the minutes of February ninth and 23rd. All appear to be in order for me, so I will move the debate to approve as submitted.
Sir, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. We now turn to public comment. Wait, where we go? A public comment. Item number four is Stephen Fusco.
Fusco.
Fusco, okay, okay. Fusco, American Red Cross proclamation. Please come forward. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having us.
Apologize on the pronunciation there. The principal, Marson Grant, pronounce it a little different there.
It's A-OK. So you have a seat right here?
Yeah.
So my name's Stephen Fusco. I am the incoming vice chair of the American Red Cross Western North Carolina chapter. I reside in Mars Hill, just down the street. So thank you for having me. It's nice to meet all of you. I will. And without further ado, I do need to get new glasses, so bear with me as I read through this. March is American Red Cross Month, a special time to honor the kindness of our neighbors who aid families in need every day in Madison County across the United States and around the world. Their dedication touches millions of lives each year as they carry out the organization's 140-year mission of preventing and alleviating suffering. During the trying times of the coronavirus pandemic, people have stepped up to help others in need, whether it was responding to this year's record-breaking disasters across the country or rolling up their sleeves to give blood when our country faced a severe blood shortage. Here in Western North Carolina, local families relied on volunteers to comfort and hope, for comfort and hope. Last year, 358 local American Red Cross volunteers responded to 198 home fires and local disasters, educated 1,100 people in community preparedness, installed 600 smoke alarms, provided 950 services to military members and their families, and helped collect over 24,000 units of lifesaving blood products. This lifesaving work is vital to strengthening our community's resilience, nearly 200 years since the birth of the Red Cross founder Clara Barton. We dedicate this month of March to all those who continue to advance her noble legacy, and we ask others to join in their commitment to care about, to care for people in need. Thank you.
Chairman, I move that we approve this proclamation. May the March is American Red Cross Month. Second, second, all in favor?
Thank you. All right.
You did sign the seating, or Tammy did sign the act, the chair is our president, the cross chair is signed.
We'll bring it. Yeah, brother.
Or you did sign the seating, if ready to sign.
We can wait. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Our next item is Tammy Cody, our wonderful director of public health. Tammy.
Hello, good evening, everyone. So I just wanted to give you an update on COVID in the county. We have been at a plateau in our nation for the number of COVID cases for a few weeks now, and during this lull that we have had, we have been providing vaccine as quickly as we possibly can. Today, we provided vaccine at the fairgrounds and at the Health Department, had a very successful day. We were very fortunate this week that there were 30 counties in those states in North Carolina that were awarded vaccine from Johnson &amp; Johnson, and we were one of those 30 counties. So this week, we've been able to provide both Moderna and Johnson &amp; Johnson, which gives us an opportunity to protect our residents. I was on a call today with the epidemiology department, and they were focusing on the immunity that we're getting from this vaccine, and I kind of had a little side thought of how we are working so hard in our county to get immunity in our community and to prevent this virus from having places to go. So as of this morning, before we started vaccinating, we had 18.9% of our population partially vaccinated. After tomorrow, we should have a fairly significant jump, but we've provided 4,122 first doses, 2,344 second doses, and we have approximately 5,000 folks in our county that are 65 or older. So the majority of those, we have gotten vaccinated, and we've provided vaccines to our school systems and to many of our essential workers that we started this week. This is a record week for us in regards to providing vaccine. Tomorrow, it will be at three separate locations, providing vaccines in the community. So by the end of this week, we will have given 2,100 vaccines. We could not do this without our strong partnerships in the county, as well as we have a tremendous amount of volunteers that are faithful volunteers that show up, that jump in, and work very hard with us. The positivity rate across the state today was 5.2%. And in a good direction, the variants are in the region, and these variants are proven to be significantly more contagious than the original COVID virus. And so we want to continue providing as much vaccine as we can to protect everyone. So we are also, I think that Mr. Gentry has that, we talked some about the building at the Health Department. We met this morning with the architects and are moving forward with that, and we hope to be looking for bids in the very near future. I had the opportunity to apply for a grant through the State WIT Department, and it appears that we are a very serious candidate for that. We asked for $75,000 to help offset the cost of our building project that will provide the isolation rooms and a communicable disease office and a office for our medical provider. So we're getting some documents and things together to provide to the state to hopefully be able to add this $75,000 to the project, and we still have some additional money that we have gotten from our COVID funds, $100,000 to help provide for this addition, as it will give us a true place to test and treat folks with respiratory illness. As our, we have not very nice building, one of the nicest ones in the county, but it is old, and it wasn't designed originally as a medical facility. So we do not have a true safe place to treat and see folks who have any type of respiratory illness, whether it is TB or COVID-19.
Tammy, thank you very much.
Tammy, just one quick question. Was it so far 13% have been vaccinated in the county?
18.9%, and hopefully with us, we're giving out 650 at the fairgrounds tomorrow, 200 at the university, and 150 here at the Health Department. So we should be up into the twenties by the end of day tomorrow. We do document in the federal system within a few hours of providing all of our vaccines.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you.
Tammy, we're going to let you go, because I know your day is about 20 hours on short term.
Thank you.
Take care. Bye-bye. Mr. Gentry, I think you have the next one, sir?
Yes, and just following up on the continuing work with our architectural firm, we got the final documents yesterday. Tammy just looked over at the building specifications, you saw the stuff last week. Donnie and I had a conversation this morning, and we would mark out here to improve, we will lay two weeks, we will begin to move forward, and we will be looking at how we fill the gap. Hopefully, we will have more information on Tammy's additional $75,000. The estimated construction budget prebid is $300,000, and so we know we have 110 already. We may have 185. We have several options on how to fund that through the rest of this year. We will review that at our meeting in two weeks. If any of you would like, in the meantime, to see a detailed set of the final paperwork and stuff, that is made to both the inspection's office, and we have a copy option. And it is ready when you're ready to go.
And with the fact of possibility of COVID money or additional COVID money coming, I think a lot of that would be, would fall into the COVID category.
Yes, and then that again, I will be there in a few minutes, so.
Sorry, didn't mean to steal your thunder.
Next, we have Ross Young. Ross, good evening, sir.
Good evening. As luck would have it, my computer timed out about 30 seconds before coming.
Was it Merkis Law, Eddie?
Yeah, that's how that works.
Don't worry, it can make anybody check me out.
Gentlemen, messengers, Donnie Laws. I appreciate the opportunity to come and share some stuff with you guys tonight. As Tammy mentioned, COVID responses, and it's been an absolute pleasure to work with Tammy. We've partnered with her in a lot of different things and with COVID vaccine response, but Commissioner Gentry asked me a few weeks ago to come and present to you guys some of the stuff that Cooperative Extension's been working on in regard to COVID response. So in addition to working with Tammy, we've done some other stuff too, and what I'm going to share with you tonight for about 10 minutes, so if you can stay awake that long, I'll share with you a video or two, a picture or two, a word or two, and maybe you'll have a little better understanding of what we did. So with that, as long as all the electronics work, Jamie?
There you go.
There we go. Now, if that works. I'm looking at it. It works before y'all get here. Jamie and I had it working on its arm.
I got it.
Yeah. It's like when you say, "Mom, watch this," and then you.
Ross Young, county extension director. And in addition to administration, I also do educational programming and community and economic development, commercial vegetable and fruit production, nurseries, Christmas tree production, as well as forest tree and wildlife.
I'm Elizabeth Ayers, one of the agriculture agents here at the Madison County Cooperative Extension Office. I work with small farmers that sell products direct to the consumer, whether that's straight off the farm, a tailgate market, or grocery stores.
This is Rebecca Bradley, agriculture extension agent. She specializes in livestock, forages, consumer agriculture, and coordinates the master gardener program.
Hi, my name is Sue Estrange, and I'm the area family consumer science extension agent for Madison, Yancey counties. And the subjects that I cover include food insecurity, food safety, food preservation, and food nutrition and wellness.
I'm Misty Barnell, and I am the 4H extension agent here in Madison County. I work with youth ages 5 to 18 in a variety of educational settings. In 4H, youth learn life skills to become productive citizens. I also work with adult volunteers to further our mission of positive youth development.
I'm Kathy Brackett, 4H program assistant. I do school enrichment with Madison County Public Schools. I do summer day camps through the summer and help with the clubs throughout the county.
I'm Megan Colwell-Woody, administrative assistant. I coordinate and support programs with all the agents.
Very early this spring, the Madison County Garden Club grew vegetable transplants in our greenhouse to donate to local food banks.
With COVID starting March of last year and restaurants shutting down, a lot of our produce farmers needed to be able to sell their produce. So our tailgate market was able to not only expand and have more vendors and sell more product, but we were the liaisons with Marshall University who allowed the market to be able to stay open with COVID restrictions.
As part of our COVID relief efforts, Madison County Extension worked on a couple of meat programs, the first one being our local food venison program, where we were able to donate 4,500 pounds of locally harvested venison into the food banks. We also help farmers secure hogs, both feeder hogs and slaughter hogs, ready for slaughter, into farms in Madison County, as well as conduct a live Zoom where we showed and demonstrated how to process your hog meat. Literally hundreds of people participated in this program.
Myself and two colleagues developed a program called So Easy to Preserve, which is a virtual five-week food preservation series. And we reached about 365 people virtually across the United States of America, and each week we focus on a different home food preservation method. First week was introduction to home food preservation, then we did low acid canning, high acid canning, freezing, and dehydrating.
This past summer, we had kids chef camp virtually. By the end of the week, the children were able to supply a complete meal, complete with homemade bread for their family.
For many years, third graders in Madison County have participated in a 4H gardening project at school, and the purpose of this program is for students to learn how to grow their own food. This year, we applied for go outside grants through the North Carolina Outdoor Heritage Council to secure some much-needed funding for improvements at the Bruce Creek and Mars Hill Elementary School gardens. We were awarded just over $9,000 to make these projects happen.
Since May of 2020, our office has delivered eight meals four days a week to homebound senior citizens.
So the Farmer-to-Family Food Box Program is a USDA program that sends farm-fresh produce, fruits, vegetables, milk, meats, yogurt, cheeses in a box to communities all over, I guess all over the country. But here in Madison County, you can receive 546 of these boxes every week, every Thursday, 13 pallets of this food shows up, and we unload it here at the extension office, and then we also put that back onto trucks and trailers for the communities to take out. All volunteers, there's between 20 and 30 volunteers within the communities to bring their trucks, their trailers, and all this food on their vehicles take back to their communities to make access food out to individuals in need of their community.
Yes, here, Kenan Amy Kishiba, we are distributing these boxes to Hot Springs today. There's another girl named Karen who had this program going since last year. She's not able to continue it. So Ken and I decided to keep it going.
We are stationed.
Yeah, it's not clicking, Jamie. It moved, it just doesn't respond to the click. So my staff had the opportunity to take a videography training two weeks ago. So I said, "All right, you have got to put this to practice and make us a video." So kudos to them. I didn't take the training. I don't know how to do it. I can barely talk on camera. But you can talk in front of 100 people, but you put a camera in front of you, what happens? I don't know what happens. Something happens. But anyway, they did a good job with that video. I thought, anyway. A few other statistics of things that we did this year, we donated a lot of time at the call center. You can see 146 hours, 21 hours with vaccines, this county and Yancey, because Sue Estrange, as you noted, she works both counties. So she worked up there some on vaccines. We had a lot of volunteers, and a lot of those were those folks you saw loading trucks. And so we're looking at 10,000 hours. This is COVID-related, and this is from the beginning of COVID. So it's not just 2021. It's part of two years. We have a kitchen behind you here that you may or may not know supports a lot of different businesses. One of those businesses donated over $6,000 worth of product, food product that they made and donated into the food banks. And then our value-added center as a whole is a distribution site where farmers order in bulk or individual items. And we do an estimate of value of the things that are offloaded on our loading dock and then repurposed out or resent out, just like the food boxes you saw. We do that with feed, with fertilized, with boxes, anything farmers need. In fact, tomorrow, there will be $25,000 worth of pallets of fertilizer stacked from here all the way back while the other part of the room is being used for something else. And we will then put that out on vehicles and send that to farmers where they buy in bulk. So that adds up to an estimated over $300,000 in this timeframe that we do that. So it's about two trucking trailers a week we're unloading. We're pretty good with Pala Jacks. Roar, we've partnered with them, and they passed out 12,000 pounds of food over 45 weeks, so most of the year. Our primary role is education. So we weren't able to stop everything we did for extension and do COVID, so we still had our job to do. So our job is education. So we teach people. And some of the things we did, we're still going into schools when they let us, still teaching them those things. We did over 220 Zooms. That doesn't, that don't mean Zooms with you guys and Zooms with my boss. That's Zooms where we're trying to teach somebody something. We did public speaking with kids. We still did some shooting practices with kids during nutrition classes, beginning farmer classes. I head up the Southeast Vegetable Conference for like three states. That was a big three-day Zoom. We did virtual day camps with kids and then pesticide classes is pretty common to something we do here. Still did farm visits, diagnostics, school gardens, embryology. And we also made more videos, and this one's shorter, so I won't keep you bored on a lot of videos. But Sue Estrange does these, which she does a lot of different ones like this. But Sue Estridge does these, which she does a lot of different ones like this. Can you just leave it there? That was really good. That was my lunch one day. Yeah, it was really good. Two staff people, Rebecca, you saw a picture of her.
Dan from Deep South Homestead. We are over here by the cabin this morning, and our...
That was not us. Rebecca is on maternity leave. She gave birth to her first child. And then we have two interns that work here too that I didn't, you didn't see. But we stay, we stay quite busy. As my preacher said, it's a blessing. It's a blessing to get to work. I have worked thirty-one years, and I have not worked a single year as hard as I've worked this past year. But it's been a blessing to serve the residents of Madison County. We stayed open throughout. The front door had to be closed for a few weeks, a few months actually. But we're here, working every day, and a pleasure to do that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Saul. Appreciate you.
All right, our next item above will be Kerry Luchesha. Nora said she is helping care of other issues. When you have our financial report?
I'm giving you material, the budget amendment number nine. This is budget amendment four A. This is saying that it was submitted to you. It includes several adjustments. Certainly, we're getting to the point now that we're beginning to adjust our things in certain departments. We have pulled some monies to do the upgrades for the courthouse, all the minimal systems for the part that we have to stay on track for all that's available and to be used for the future as well. You will see fees. Transportation Director has secured funding from the Department of Transportation to assist individuals who have received their vaccinations. You will see what we are doing for other various things. You will notice economic development. This was a grant tax incentive. This is part of the tax credit for economic development. And you will see other fund analysis and departmental, all the faces. This is all normal stuff. Third page, you will see the tax receipts. You will notice the, or send sales tax again, the report on that, which is there.
Nora, I have a question. If there were any, not the, I think you're probably able to answer it if I'm saving Kerry for the next time. But I noticed one of the things we did was a, was a repair on a vehicle.
Yes.
And a fairly pricey repair on a vehicle that probably isn't worth a whole heck of a lot more than what we paid to fix. Do we have any kind of a review process on these vehicles to determine whether it's really worthwhile to sink that much money into a vehicle that may not sustain the value of that?
Issue of that, one-on-one.
Yeah.
You may be aware, the vehicle is a Subaru that was recycled out from the SS. The vehicle is in good shape, but it is over a hundred thousand miles. The transmission, and we got several different processes on that, is the least expensive process. The vehicle is being transferred for environmental health, which is one that we all know is terrible for vehicles. So for a vehicle that was paid for, which ultimately was paid for another fifteen hundred thousand pounds, and the otherwise applied vehicle was rationed. And so the judgment was paid through the best of fifty-two hundred dollars to spend the life of that vehicle rather than purchase another. People are huge people.
And then, and that's...
And then we leave the life of that vehicle that's worth fifty-two hundred thousand.
And that's a fair assessment. My concern would be, because we've had them in the past where we've actually spent the money that a vehicle is worth to fix. I just want to make sure that we are review needs. And it would also probably lend to the fact that we probably need to continue to try to develop some sort of a maintenance structure, because there's really no reason that vehicle with a hundred thousand miles on it should need a new transmission yet. Under, under most circumstances, if it's properly maintained, that vehicle should last. Now, the Outbacks, in all fairness, the Outbacks do have hereditary transmission issues. And you have to really stay on top of the maintenance to get the life out of them that you should. But if it's properly maintained, there's no reason that vehicle shouldn't last two hundred fifty-three hundred thousand miles.
We are actually working with them. And among the things that we moved to reorganize departments, and are already booking at fleet management to come under our transportation department as we have recently moved in house maintenance. And as part of next year, we will be evolving the order to the major departments. You know, the sheriff's office, telling them to fleet management. And I think that that office now has capable enough leadership to be able to organize and maintain a fleet management system for us.
Excellent.
Yep.
I think we're done, Spock. Thank you.
The fleet management is very critical in terms of getting out.
Absolutely.
And we see no lack of industry in that in certain departments.
And these vehicles have a great value to our other departments as we can hand them down to other departments. But that really only helps that department if you give them the quality vehicle to begin with. So that's, maintenance is really, is really key, especially on these, like the Subarus and whatnot. You've got to really stay on top of your maintenance.
Well, the reason about marrying the county's fleet management, the current transportation department, the state mandated there, and there is an excellent fleet management system already in effect there. And part of the software that we're going to be improving here the next while is part of that fleet management system. That's part of that manager, and I say that clause is to approve part of the last one, which is new software for this department.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, any other questions, folks, on budget number nine?
If nobody has any other suggestions, we need to make a motion to approve that, gentlemen.
I'm making a motion to approve. Five seconds. Second discussion, all in favor? Thank you.
All right, you will also see some other supporting documents in here. Looking some foundation grants for the animal shelter. And you will see just other supporting documents, which is going to be standard to, for these, to you. Then you will notice the financial report of love, including all the checks as it's going down.
Is the video of this linked in the videoing system at the courthouse? I see the invoice for it. Is that man completed?
No, there are. We're waiting on purchase order. No problem with this.
I got you.
We don't permit any purchase orders. We don't want this stuff.
Very good.
Item number nine is Diana, Diana Norton, our tax assistant. Good evening, ma'am.
I'm just here for our monthly approval for refunds and releases. Do you have any questions?
I do have a very possible problem.
Okay. Yeah, we're slowing down now. Yeah.
Yeah, that is much easier work with. Thank you. Trying to get back to a bear world, man.
This is definitely a lot shorter. We need, we need a motion and a second. Get a motion to approve this, please.
Motion to approve.
Second, second discussion, all in favor? Passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I have Chris Maney, our Director of Parks and Recreation. Good evening, Chris.
Hello, there you go.
Good to see you, sir.
Good to see you, dog. So in order to look at our maintenance program for the upcoming season, mowing, weed eating, trying to alleviate a little bit of pressure from Jesse in our maintenance departments. Mr. Ginger and I talked about maybe possibly bidding out some of the mowing to help his staff, you know, do other stuff. Because when it comes to mowing season, that's all they do is mow and weed eat. So he asked me to get three bids for that, mowing, weed eating. You should have those three bids, and that's for Beach Glen, Ebs Chapel, Barnard Park, and the old Walnut School, Walnut Community Center. So I got the three bids. These three gentlemen are all local here, county, county guys. So that would alleviate a lot of pressure off Jesse and his staff. But I do not currently have the money in my budget for so, so.
Chris, just a couple of questions.
Sure.
Just, just points of information.
Sure.
Generally speaking, or historically speaking, who has, have they augmented this with something other than, than our facilities folks?
I'm sorry, I don't know what you're saying.
Have they augmented the service of the mowing?
They've always done it.
Outside you. Yeah, I'll give you an example. You can see inmates, trustees, sheriff's office, people who are on a work program for community service hours that derive through the corp system.
In the past, they have used some. I know it's hard to get those folks now, Jesse says. But it's always been done in-house as far as the, you know, the mowing. They did some weed eating, I think, with the trustees and stuff. But primarily, it's been, it's been done in-house.
The maintenance staff, as we well know, have great difficulty to act so much trouble with all of the, the maintenance. The equipment that needs to be purchased next year to replace the current mowing equipment. In the next year, we will save more than that by having this contracted out and not having to replace the need even our own. So in the long term, it is a much better utilization for maintenance staff to not spend most of their time for half the year mowing. And the condition of the lawn fall field, because we are going to activate this year, there's going to activate back through parks and raccoons. It'll be in next year's budget to provide, excuse me, another first-class fall field. It's also putting an extra strain on our assistant folks to do that. And Jesse on this, he actually did a cost analysis that the amount of time that the dollar value of this people that are spent mowing is more than what the contract cost is. Pretty problematic, seeing it be an office in the next year before Donnie and I, Chris, develop a contract. But we are to the point that we're going to have to start mowing within the next few weeks. And so it's either our maintenance folks dropping everything else they're doing with that mowing, or we contract that out and keep trying to get some of this maintenance covered.
And those bids are for the calendar year, not the, the bids are for the calendar year. They bid on twenty-twenty-one calendar year, obviously not our fiscal year.
And is it just these four that tend to large amount of time and direction? And it's safe to say we have other fall fields and areas that need it. We're going to sustain those ourselves?
Correct. These are, these are the big ones. I think this takes him, I think he said twenty-some hours, roughly half his week to do these, so.
Just for the record, the school system maintains their own properties with their own people.
Correct.
For, from a moment standpoint and whatnot.
Correct.
So the, these four properties typically would dominate half of his work week?
I think that's what he said, yes.
For him and his staff?
Yes.
Yes.
That's crazy.
It's a lot.
Yep, that is a lot. He's got to be doing something outside just mowing. It's important. He's got to be doing folks on other things outside their home.
Any more questions, Chris?
So do we need to approve the bid, the meeting as well, acceptance of a bid? Or do we need to get the contractor on first and then deal with that at our work session?
Well, what would be ideal, Don, if we select, based on, the bids are remarkably close. Really are. All three of these people have been fitted. They're all pretty professional. They already do it. They're all pretty, already have the insurance, but we would need to develop a contract, correct, Don?
Were the specs, were the set out in the bid, and how often they would mow and grass thieve, all of that stuff, and the weeding, and the spraying, and all of that?
Yeah, word of mouth. We did a spec, I didn't do a spec sheet. I just told them what I wanted done so they could all bid on the same thing, with the exact.
It, it's a very simple contract. You just incorporate that, those, what they bid on into, into form. So I think what we, what this board needs to do is analyze those three bids, go ahead and vote on awarding the bid, and then authorizing whoever you want to, to execute the contract with your hobby, with the best bid. I just have two points to pray. All these folks are Madison County folks.
Yes, sir.
Correct.
And it looks like on one of these, it actually breaks down. So I'm guessing that they're all assisted with in your specs, all of your bids.
I told them all the same thing when they were bidding.
So they know what they expect.
Correct, they do. And I did tell them they would have to meet, you know, Mr. Laws and sign his contract if awarded the contract. So they're aware of that.
Have any of these done any work first before, in capacity, you know?
Not that I know of, no.
So we don't have anything as far as work history go out?
Oh, one of those gentlemen, the maintenance department, our city person.
I thought you were, had the contract. Yeah, I thought the name was familiar.
Yeah, and these employees.
Okay, so my question is, are we going, I know for budget purposes, we need to go off of what they've estimated. I assume we are not going to, their pay is going to be performance-based. Okay, so they're not, they're not going to be paid full amount if they don't mow the number of times that they obligated to mow.
That is correct.
Sure. And we're not going to have to listen to, like, ranking this week, so you guys are two weeks out or anything like that?
And it'll be under my, under partial rates. I'll, I'll be keeping an eye on their, their, their mowing.
Well, so Mr. Ginger, we're trying to dig tonight, who, more than that?
We need to follow that if we can. We need to get this executed, because our project is going to be started.
Well, we can do the contract, but we're going to have to have a budget in for Kerry to actually execute it under the certification, because Kerry is not funding in budget right now, budgeted to pay.
We have to transfer this remaining up to June thirty of our maintenance budget. If that money is available in our maintenance budget, which you are correct, we'll take that budget.
So there are funds available to get us to where we need to be.
To the end of this fiscal year.
And it should be roughly half of it. I mean, coming, you know, end of June's kind of, you know, it's kind of halfway, so it works out. And it should be roughly half of it. I mean, coming, you know, end of June's kind of, you know, it's kind of halfway, so it works out.
Well, Jimmy, if we're going to pick tonight, I am recommending the very last one due to the level of details and giving us a cycle we're getting.
Well, we can address that in the contract, though, so I would recommend, go ahead, give me that, that in the form of motions, Sam. Just move us forward. I don't have a second. Discussion.
I have to say, one, if we're voting on this, even though the standard is, if we're voting on stuff from it's one to five, it's not here.
All right. Generally, it's been things that would might be, what, what might be, uh, a different level, correct, Mr. Garrison, as far as we, we, we have voted on things that we consider to be that was, I don't want, I like.
More perfunctory.
Thank you. Obviously, nor pernible, perfunctory, but that might be.
I just don't want a stiff mark.
No, I'm kidding, yeah, okay, yeah.
So, I mean, there, there is a possibility we have a tie-up, not a case mark, but that's necessary. Alright, so, in, in regards to other discussions, um, I understand the proposal was definitely previous, but it's also highest, so, that's, um, my, my question would be, uh, if we can dress up the proposal in language of contract. Um, and I, and I have nothing against any, you know, I've got, no favor to the board, any one of these three guys. I don't really know any one of the three, so.
Obviously, that went on the lower report, schools, my, my agent here is there, he used to mow for us, you know, he runs a pretty good lawn mower.
I got you, see, we need to have some history with.
I guess we can have a point of discussion, if we feel much the same.
Yes.
Discussion, yeah, you know, if any of these folks, do they do this full-time? Is this first gig for them?
Uh, I think two of the three do it full-time. I know, uh, Mr. Ginger and Jackie Shelton do it full-time, and I think, um, Mr. Garrett does it on the side.
So, the insurance guys can come out, I mean, now, we know that these guys are insured and or bonded to appropriate, so that we don't get stuck with a, uh, potential workers' comp situation or anything like that, that would get in their.
They all three assured me that they would be. Two of them currently are, one said that he got, if he got the contract, he would be.
We just, um, if you get those certificates, somebody has to verify that they're legit.
I will.
Because there are those, those certificates are real easy to fetch.
Right.
And, and.
And I'm fine with Mr. Garrison's, uh, recommendation with it, we, we might take care of it tonight and wait for Mr. Snell to back, that's fine with me. I, I want somebody to mow the yards on, on a consistent basis, not take out hands of people. I don't care, I really don't care who knows, as long as it's getting mowed, that, that's my valid issue.
And in all defense, I mean, you know, the, the, the differences between the three are pretty normal, so. There's not much difference between the low bid and high bids, so.
Yeah, they were all really close.
What, 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 what is our, uh, discuss, we're, we're in discussion mode now, and we want to pull it and just say no, wait until Mr. Snell's in our chair with us, or shall we go forward?
I would really prefer to, uh, three weeks, get behind on this mowing, potentially by personal functional, uh, being not size, it's, it's worth still part. My two peers are also correct, here, that on the whole operational, functional phase, we, we do I propose to go along with that, so. But that would be my, my preference is for you to move this into tonight, uh, by the nature of overtaking of the process.
Well, my, my, um, I would ask that the gentleman making the motion would amend, because if he would amend his motion, uh, to make sure that, that all proper insurances and whatnot are included in this price, um, and, uh, that, that he can fulfill the contract as drawn up by county attorney, I, I would, I would be okay.
I would, I would, I would, I will amend my motion to say just exactly what Commissioner White said, and this, we approve, uh, whoever gives it by attorney law, according to we move forward. Do I, can I get a second on the amendment? Okay. Discussion now, we're to a discussion base again.
Uh, just a point of reference, so twenty-three of them, just for public information, is we're talking the difference in the entire year's contract, uh, eighteen thousand dollars plus or minus, we're talking the difference between the three bids is seven hundred and ten dollars. Of, um, you have a total of, of eight thousand, so the bids are relatively close. Unfortunately, I don't know one of these folks, so. I'm a low bid guy, parents are by nature, but at the same time, I don't put a problem to the other two, so.
I don't know any of them, so I'm just going off their bid.
There are a couple of questions.
Okay, question been called, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the, the third one, Mr. Garrett?
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
You're nice.
Uh, this brings us now down to North Inter Commissioner, interim county managers. There are eleven gentlemen.
Alright, so I want to have a number of very good updates. First, a revenue update. Both local and state revenues continue to exceed initial estimates. Um, the numbers are continuing to look positive. They are ahead of all of the initial projections that were built in the budget. The state, uh, numbers actually are even to the point where, Matt, I know this is people talking to people moronic, that the circumstances that exist in the state budget hopefully will, will come to pass to help, uh, a lot of us. And the situation now moving to the federal funds. There was a comprehensive phone call yesterday afternoon of the National Association of County Commissioners by the block yesterday afternoon. The initial numbers that I provided to you gentlemen a few days ago, quite productively, are still the numbers to the best of everyone's knowledge that are in that legislation that may be signed almost any hour. Those funds, we do not yet have the guidance. The initial legislation is specifically worried and corrected. It will be as flexible as possible. And I hope that follows the truth to help everybody everywhere do the best to utilize those funds. The first half of those are to be delivered in sixty days of the execution of the bill, which means it would come in toward the end of this fiscal year. The other ones would come in within twelve months. We do not have to expend all of that money within the next two fiscal years according to the initial guidance. We probably have three years. And so, the challenge would be, and I don't mind saying this quite openly, our challenge would be wisely use this much money. I think we will, which all will do it. Alright. Moving along, I have a handout. Uh, the decision handout. This is a red paper handout. Red paper. Of course, I won't through it, I think we all know it's actually what's in it. We will revisit this in two weeks. Jesse and I have spent a lot of hours looking at the most necessary repairs and immediate upgrades. Donnie and I talked this morning, we look at funding options, which we will discuss in two weeks, we definitely have time to do that. We borrow money, it has to go through the L G C, we all know this by the process. And we can get into some more specifics, and I am quite sure there are things that are not on this list. But even this list, which appears to be on the surface relatively modest, the figures at the back end are not. Single biggest money pit that we have is the Old English House. And if we would like in two weeks, and we'll see what you guys want to do, we could actually make part of that work session. Shall we say, go pick the tires, filter it, filter it, boom, and bring your, bring your boots and your scooter home.
That's tough, right.
It was built in the early nineteen seventies, and it was often built well. And with all due respect, um, building is in much worse shape than it is looks. But again, these are judgments we need to make, and they are a central part of our planning, what we're going to do. And this is, uh, as I said, I would provide to you, and we will revisit it in two weeks, along with how, if we choose to do this, we can answer.
Now, I'd like to continue, uh, our campaign on establishing a long-term contingency capital outlay plan, circa the one-year, three-year, five-year, ten-year program extending even up to twenty years for the capital needs of our county when it comes to the courthouse, when it comes to our justice buildings in general, when it comes to the admin offices, when it comes to the office year-end, is to develop this strategic long-term plan that addresses and leased as a plan of what we're going to do, not just for the four years that I'm seated here, but also in the years ahead, and then how we're going to allocate funding for that, so I'd like to continue to
Yes, sir.
to, uh, put that out, that, uh, piecemeal work is, has never worked for this county, because we don't have the funding for it, and this is no different, so.
Yeah, you and I have had very good discussions
Yeah.
surrounding that. The irony of what you see here is whether it's from this building, to jail, to the parking lot, to the health department, to the continued occupancy of the, of the English, or the two or three years it would take us to transition out. These, these are, there, there could be a thing or two in here that could be questioned, I, I watch a lot, I ain't the main thing. But when you get into a, a basic functioning building, even functioning, occupied, and it is a foster child, as is the health department, several of our working as much for you, but of days, of, and lack of funding, and lack of planning, and it is ingrained by, by whoever the commissioners were, that we never actively funded for them to make. Um, and whether it's our personal homes, or whether it's the property for which we are accountable for, uh, is made out. Or maybe an health law company, and, uh, the same bill as you.
So, a lot of these, um, per manner of discussion, and then maybe future discussion, more so than deferred now. Um, a lot of this is going to require that a portion or all of that building be shut down at any given time. Um, do we have a game plan for that?
Do you?
If not, would do any difference.
Well, and that's part of what, and how much do we do, and how much do we say, okay, we are going to move over the architects and plan in two, three years, we're going to be out here. And how, how can we live here during that period of time, and do the least we can? Those are adjustments.
At least that's right, yes.
And maximizing where we are now, like we've already done with making space, middle of a long branch by working on that building, which is going to give us some you know, breathing space in the old English. But the two decisions that, that really, that really drive our budget. One, we're going to go on payroll, and one, we're going to do all maintenance, and building is concerned. Going in the rest of the budget for next year or the next couple of years is much easier to do, and those two big boxes are the, those are the two big boxes that drive our budget. Well, we got to start with going what we got, what condition it's in. It's just like accessible to the courthouse. Okay, for, for you, for you start. You, you just start painting a building, you start working on it, you start fixing this, fixing that, that's your ball. That's Harrison's thing. And that's been almost always true regardless of, oh, sure, that's something I haven't had to do once. If you know that you need extra amount of money to x survive, it's just like we want to do anything else, we, we have to have the resources, and we have to know where those resources are coming from.
What I don't want is to come back in two years, and all of a sudden, we've got a surprise that we can't afford, and we're going to try to figure out how to crunch it on the backs of taxpayers who are already paying more than their fair share. Should be known, something, on a long-term plan, the Bible says to carefully consider the cost, and then, uh, develop a plan, so I appreciate your leadership in this.
And we're working on it, yeah.
So, I, you know? A lot of things, that's, that's okay, just one other thing for food for thought is, um, and I know, I, I know that I'm comparing apples to oranges a little bit on this, but I know on several of these buildings, we have outdoor, uh, parking lot lighting and outdoor lighting for, for the structures themselves as well.
That actually saves us parts for us.
And, and I, and I, some of that goes less to security, the buildings, and stuff like that too, not only safety, but security. I know, you know, Duke, uh, Duke Power, for example, uh, we just did a major improvement at our church, and a lot of that was actually subsidized by Duke uh, in the end.
You and I have had conversations, actually, with Jason, about the student.
But when I'm looking at, at our expenditures, our monthly expenditures, and this is typically kind of an average cost, I see where we wrote nearly a twenty-six thousand dollar check, French Broad Electric, this month for electricity for the, for the county offices, and that seems to be pretty much an average monthly payment to them.
I include the school system.
Exactly.
Or a couple of other independents, so that's only about thirty-niney percent of the common schools.
So, I'm, I'm just hopeful that, uh, if any of our friends, French Broad may be listening, and I, they might be able to offer up some solutions for efficiency as well as maybe some little grants.
Well, and also including even what we've got for predicate LED, a couple of parking lots that we have currently lit, where we can convert those to LED will save us to operate some of our electric costs are much as killing us. One of the things, without getting into much of the fourth line of finance, we still have much of the old English electric live, and that building, including the malice buried in the seeds, still churning away with the weapons.
Well, my suggestion is, as far as that goes, I'm all about going green, um, and being more energy efficient, so my suggestion is that we have panel, a group of people that solicits, we have people in this county that are experts at energy efficiency, and some have served in capacities throughout the county over the years, is to elicit their participation in doing a building-by-building assessment of the places where we can reduce, uh, cost, electricity costs, heating and cooling costs, energy efficiency costs, things we can incorporate short-term that'll make a long-term difference for paying out.
Uh, actually, Duke Energy, not to put them on the spot, but with Matt and that, we discussed not just their service area, the hot springs, have their portion of the service area here in Marshall, they think, a small area in Marshall. And working with them and with French Broad Electric, and with others, uh, the utilities and other people are very eager, they want to cut electric. Such, they're for the both of building new power plants, and maintaining that is more expensive, and they actually prefer conservation. But yes, that's a valuable part of saving money on, obviously, the buildings we're going to keep for a very long time, many of them. Part because, and the school system, so here's the next thing too. A portion of what we provide to the schools, and Grant says this, are those continuing operational that come out of our, possibly three million a year, that's in our budget, a huge portion of that are things like utilities, so to help the school system become much more efficient, that's also the county gets a backdoor benefit at there as well, and they are by far our largest energy cap. School system has a lot of, of, of energy inefficiency, and they've made a lot of progress from the question.
I'd just like to see this become more green. I go to Sheriff's Office, a year, it quits work, and we call both, call the J C, and they come up and fix it. The reason it quits working is because I keep turning the lights off. And it's got a solar-powered automatic flushing device. You know, so I just think there's a lot of areas that we could enhance, uh, our efficiency.
Well, 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 uh, here's guys, please, I've saved the cheapest route, that's right. Okay, Mr. Garrett, your, your words are, are, are true, and ringing through, and in my two years here, particular plans have been talked about, we've looked at it, and then we got to a hole, and we dug ourselves out, but at many time issue, we've, we've got, we've got to make that particular plan happen, and if not, we, we will never move past this, and that's not, it's nobody's fault, I'm not, I'm not, fingers at anybody, I'm just saying, without, without a little bit of
And that's not, it's nobody's fault, I'm not, I'm not fingers at anybody, I'm just saying, without, without a little bit of that path carved out for us. And Doris is right, you know, we, we're trying to pay this and just survive, but we still gotta go, we're gonna go next. If we don't figure that out, we, we will never get where we're gonna go.
That's why they're elected, isn't it?
I'm just saying, we just hunt it down and, and lock the doors and just go at it.
Thank you, Doc.
We just find it happen, just gonna have to make it happen.
Thank you, Doc.
Um, as the county has been recognized by the U.S. Census Bureau for doing outstanding work, a lot of people that helped through this, while we remember when we were doing that. We also earned a possible five thousand dollar bonus from the federal government, and I think we hope to get a really accurate census here, and we'll see when the numbers come in. But we've been told that we have one of the highest percentages of people who participated in the census.
Great.
And so at least hopefully it'll be as close to that as it can be. Alright, the next item is the CTF software. And this is the actual contract on the app of the Transportation Department to be considered for approval by the board, and Donnie, you have reviewed this.
I, I have read that, and the only addition I would add would be the exclusion of the amendment, the standard amendment that I prepared that goes on all county contracts. I did not see it attached to the.
There will be, there will be attached. Manny, please make said note.
Question, Mr. Garrett?
No, and, and as you previously mentioned, just to reiterate back, this, the software package that, that is going to, that, that is being purchased for the Transportation Department. Um, also will be useful for other departments in the county, um, as far as anybody that had, any of the departments have vehicles, or we have to maintain things of that nature, so. Um, I, it, it, it's, it's, it's gonna be a helpful, it's gonna be a helpful product on, on multiple fronts.
Yes, and, and it's given to the lesson.
Yes.
I think too, this helped to facilitate, um, transportation in general, that private contractors use the same thing to holler clients in our county.
Oh, yeah, correct.
And this affords us a better opportunity to maybe, uh, captivate some of that, uh, financial reimbursement.
Well, and, and this also documents properly, uh, which has not been done for many years, um, to, to, to actually make sure that we're getting the, the proper reimbursements. We've got documentation to show what, what those reimbursements should be.
Yes. And we are not, uh, the first, the person to use this, many of our surrounding counties have used it before, and, uh, during the last couple of years, three years, we were sort of, have lost a little bit there. Some of this stuff didn't get followed through all, but it's now getting followed through all, and, uh, it's, it's good stuff.
And we've already voted to approve this, have we not?
We just made to approve the contract.
Okay, so I'll make the motion that we approve the contract as amended by our county attorney.
So I have a second? There a second?
Second.
A second. Discussion? All in favor? Thank you, ma'am.
Alright. Gentlemen, this is interesting proposition. We have a new bid. You can see there, can receive on a piece of property. We have discussed, or discussed it previously. And, uh, I think the, uh, note is sufficient. Put that on behalf of, uh, my county manager, that. Subject to discussion.
I'm all about putting property back on the tax roll, but not at, uh, one-tenth of one percent of its value. So I, I moved, we rejected this bid. Top of, I did two at first, I had to read it two or three times to make sure.
Hold on, you, you want to say, more quick, there's a top up there. Yeah, there's a lot.
Yeah. I don't think there's any, uh, concern of, of, of mine, this is not, it's not gonna make it past by again, I'm sure, so. Uh, I would say, uh, in general, that we don't, we do not approve this.
Yes, I've got a motion, are you the second?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All in favor?
Okay. Alright. Alright, gentlemen, we are down to our vacancies. Um, and you will notice, we have only. Three on the board of health. We have one on the housing department. And we have a, what would appear to be a large number for parks and recreation, we cycle those five every year. It's such a huge bull, okay? So, uh, five of those would be normal cycle. You will notice, looking back at the top of the parks and recreation, you will notice that the last two there term will expire in twelve of twenty-two. So these are actually, do a little correction work there, so, uh, this will get all of these back in their proper sequence. We continue to work, Manny's working very hard at this, um, some other boards that we will also be bringing to you soon, that we will get those back in sequence. So this is the last.
Um, in regards to the board of health, um, just for a little bit of background for anybody who may be watching, and those that are independents. Uh, the board of health board is structured that there are certain people that have to come from certain segments of, of, of our community. So for example, you have to have a, a, a registered physician, or you have to have a pharmacist, someone who's an active pharmacist, or a dentist, or a veterinarian, or an engineer. I mean, there's different things, there's a county, could be one that has to be a county commissioner, which is me. Um, and then there's just random citizens as well. Um, so, uh, the first one is, uh, Dr. Suzanne Sheldon, who is our, one of our veterinarians here in the county. Um, I, I would like to take this opportunity to just commend Dr. Sheldon. She has made her staff available to the Madison County Health Department on, uh, several occasions to help with that injury for the COVID and stuff, so. Um, just a hats off and a thank you to, to Dr. Sheldon, um, I think she deserves that recognition for her and her staff. And I would, uh, recommend that Dr. Sheldon be reappointed to the, uh, board of health, that, that, in the required role of the, uh, veterinarian, veterinarian for county.
Second. All, all, all in favor?
So we've got, the reason I'm doing them individually is we've got four openings, but we don't have three, so people that have three, so that's why, that's why I was, the other two I bundled together. Uh, would be Diana Rogers, who is a citizen, and Larry Peak, who has served on the board in the past as well, Diana has as well, uh, that is an engineer. Um, those two have agreed to serve if so desired, uh, there's no one else that is competing for those positions, and I would move that they be, uh, um, re-upped, or reappointed, uh, to those two individual positions, that'd be Diana Rogers and Larry Peak.
Second? Second. Discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Um, Mr. Garrett, I move that the fourth seat on the board of health be, um, carried over to our next meeting.
Anybody else have a discussion, or?
For the record, there are no other applicants, though.
Oh, okay, thank you.
And that seat would be for a citizen, though, by the way, so if there's any citizens in attendance or, uh, maybe watching online. Um, I would recommend that, uh, you get your application in, because we do have an opening for a, a spot for a, just random citizen. Alright, moving on to the housing authority, I guess?
Yes, sir.
Um. We've got one opening, and we've got one applicant, um, I think that applicant is, uh, more than qualified, or we got one open? I'm sorry.
We.
Two, two openings.
We only have one applicant for you.
Yes.
That's another slot, somebody that's, would like to serve as part of the housing authority board, vacancy that is, uh, nobody applied for.
I would certainly second, uh, Commissioner Whacko's, uh, motion, I think, to approve, uh.
Carol, asking?
Yeah. You have a motion and a second? Discussion? All in favor?
Somebody else want to take part for rec, or do y'all want here to be thoughtful?
I think you're doing great, though.
Okay.
Yeah, and just as a matter of, uh, uh, five of those individuals are a continuance.
Yes.
One is new.
And we've got the appropriate application for that individual?
Yes, sir.
Um, and so, that being said, I will do these as a, uh, because we have, let's see. We've got, we've got enough, we've got an equal number of applicants and positions available, I believe.
Right.
So, uh, I will move that we appoint, uh, reappoint Cassandra Butler, Brian Cody, Lee Hoffman, Adam Hunter, Matt Boone Jr. And, uh, new appointment of Eric Allen, uh, to the Parks and Rec Board to fulfill or finish out that, all the openings on that.
And again, Matt Boone's term will expire twelve twenty-two, and Eric Allen's term will expire twelve twenty-two.
Yes. Do we need to, the other ones vary as well, do we need, the other ones are all three.
All of those are standard.
Yep.
Yes.
Mr. White, I comment him up, in a form of motion, sir?
Yes, it does.
May I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Awesome.
And I believe that leaves one of those on the, right.
Hmm, that just leaves the one spot enough for the board of health, what else you see on?
So we covered all of those.
Correct, just double check. Don't, don't worry, we've got one position on board of health that we have.
It's easy to lose them in all that we're on.
Oh, yeah. You have it, so.
I don't know, she doesn't live in the county anymore.
Mr. Garrett, I have nothing else, unless there's more, I will say, in language required.
Will we come to the end of our agenda, do I have a motion for a German?
Hold on a second.
Okay.
I have some clarity, we have six, six applicants, one which is not included in the name.
She doesn't live in the county anymore.
That would have five, man.
Yep.
voted for six people.
Yeah, there are six.
Manny, would you be kind enough to read back that motion for the record?
Adam Hunter's name is not listed as an applicant.
Is your question?
I'm sorry, what, what, repeat, please?
Adam Hunter is not an applicant.
Okay.
And he's not listed to me.
Alright, I would that I called.
Sheriff, the two, or, Mr. Attorney's, do they go in that motion?
I think what Manny said is that he will serve, there's just not an application, is that correct?
There's no verification that he will or will not serve, we have not received an application.
So you probably do need to make a new motion to only fill five of those positions.
So the director of that department is here, Chris, has he indicated to you that he'd be willing to serve again?
He said he would, he said he would serve, and would give me the application.
So you did.
It's good for me.
Okay, it is good.
Alright, everybody.
Fair enough.
Right.
Okay. So, I have to, because I have concerns, I just want to, it's a ten.
Jim, I have a motion for a German on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
A discussion, all in favor? God bless you all.
Y'all want to serve, be later.